Anywhere up there.
Yeah, technology is amazing. Although I do feel like I'm hanging from the ceiling.
Only been a year and a half since I saw.
I was going to hardly recognize you. Yeah, it has been. I had my first dinner party about two months ago. People that I usually have dinner with on a pretty regular basis, but we haven't gotten together in a year and a half. Yeah.
Okay, I think they got the recordings going, so.
I see the red light.
So. I see Charles there.
Hello.
Janet.
And Lisa, are you there?
No, Lisa, Lisa emailed us. She had something come up. She's not gonna be able to make it.
Okay.
And Joe, you can, you can hear us as well, and Janet.
I can hear you.
Okay. Jan, I think Janet's the last one. We've gotta just test the audio.
Somebody is not coming through very clearly, though.
Yeah, we got a little feedback that time, but that's the first we've had.
Okay. So is that Clay as well? Is Clay there as well? Who just entered the City Hall?
That was, that was Clay, yeah.
Right, Clay.
Where's the camera to wait to turn?
I move that we approve. I moved that we approved the agenda.
I second it.
All the room?
Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke? Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Joe Johnson?
Yes. Do I have any corrections to be made on the minutes from our last meeting?
I have a, I just want to mention on the, from the last meeting, the approval of the agenda and the approval of the minutes. I voted yes, but I don't see my name on there. Maybe I was muted at the time.
I'll correct that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no amendments, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
All the room?
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Knop?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton? Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Joe Johnson?
Yes. This is a quasi judicial hearing regarding the public hearing and consideration of SR 21-05. David Vinaida requests on behalf of Dana and Thurman Cardwell 1696 South Hemlock for a setback reduction, rear yard setback requirement for an entry arbor in conjunction with a fence form and existing residence. SR 21-05, David Vinaida, on behalf of Dana and Thurman Cardwell, applying to allow a arbor with an entry gate in excess of six feet in height within the rear yard setback of the property, according to Chapter 17-14, Residential Medium Density Zone of the Municipal Code. Property is located at 1696 South Hemlock, Tax Lock 4102, MAP 51030DA, and Residential Moderate Density Zone. The request will be reviewed against Municipal Code, Section 17.64.010 Setback Reduction Provisions Established. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any commissioner member had an expert take contact or made a site visit?
Site, site visit.
Site visit.
All right. Okay, staff report?
All right, I'm gonna just go ahead and read through this. You all have the same staff report materials. And since we, I'm having some technical issues, so I don't, I'm not gonna share my screen if that's okay with everyone. It's fairly straightforward. So what we have is a 7,500 square foot residential medium density R2 zoning district lot with an existing home there with, from South Hemlock between, it's a through lot between South Hemlock and Forest Lawn. The residence, 3100 square foot existing residence, according to the Classip County Assessor's Office records, it was built in 2007. They indicated on the CKI survey, oceanfront setback from the Cannon Beach history by location records, which is your Exhibit C1. Many of the homes and accessory structures located along the same stretch of forest lawn are non-conforming structures placed well within the required yards adjacent to forest lawns right of way, presumably due to the geological hazard along the oceanfront there. This is not an oceanfront lot. This is one of the ones between Hemlock and Forest Lawn. But many of the neighboring properties, including the recently approved Klonoff property at 1658 Forest Lawn, across Forest Lawn right of way, and the new home at 1698 Forest Lawn, the homes at 1680 and 1740 Forest Lawn, have all received setback reductions or variances over the past 20 years. The applicant was issued a letter of violation on July 11, 2021, regarding the violation of constructing an arbor and required rear yard and given alternatives for bringing the structure into compliance. The letter I've included in your packet as C2, the applicant submitted materials requesting a setback reduction on July 26, 2021, within the timeline prescribed in the letter of violation. And that's what, that's what's before you tonight. And when this came in, Mr. Vinaida had asked, I believe, for a setback reduction. And I said, I think the, the best thing possible, I thought, would be to put a conditions of approval and to do the 15-foot to the zero lot line. So I'm gonna jump down to, in the staff report, I've included kind of the relevant application, and under the applicable criteria, I included the lot dimension, what a through lot, and various definitions that are applicable. But I wanted to kind of touch on a couple of things. The structure does not intrude into any view sheds as the structure depicted in the attached photos falls directly west of the existence residence and not within the sidelines of any neighboring view sheds. Moreover, placing a condition limiting any extension or addition to the proposed arbor where required rear yard setback requirements are maintained according to R2 District would provide assurance that the standard remains viable for future conditions. And so the setback reduction ordinance does allow you to place conditions upon those. So that's what I've recommended as a, a way to allow an entry arbor in the rear yard. This entry arbor would be allowed in a front yard, and this through lot, you know, kind of has that two-frontage issue, and that's what they're wanting to put their entry arbor in their rear yard where it's not permitted. So if I jump down to the next staff comment, the applicant has provided that he permitting construction on a lot with unusual configuration, and that would be the through lot. The applicant states that is, the intent of the arbor to serve is the main entrance to the residence since the elevation of the property, access from Hemlock is not welcoming or safe. The standard provides an opportunity for the planning commission to grant a reduction of the western setback as requested to allow for the entry arbor. Placing the limiting condition on expansion to the required yard of other structures would assure compliance with the standard. Down to 176410A7, where any encroachment into a setback will not substantially reduce the amount of privacy. I've stated, the home is currently operated as a 14-day short-term rental with an occupancy of 10 and parking shown for four cars. Access from South Hemlock Street, property has ample one-street right-of-way parking area along the newly constructed rear yard fence, frontage off of Forest Lawn, and all those signs are placed within the first few hundred feet of Forest Lawn, heading north along the one-way roadway stating no parking in this block. It is unclear if the entire 40-foot Forest Lawn right of way is considered the block intended or just the initial stretch as it makes its way around the wetlands area. If the right-of-way adjacent to the proposed entry arbors intended to be no parking, it should be more clearly marked. And there's, it's not indicated that it is a no parking area in the pictures I think that I even supply in the packet, show parking along there. So further actions, you know, my recommendation is approval with the condition that I've placed there on as, as no more further development, no more development other than this arbor and the conditions there. Any questions?
So the, the arbor that's, that's there, is that does that fall on, that fall under an accessory structure?
Yeah, so that would be an accessory structure because we have what's called an entry arbor that is in the fencing language of our accessory structure language, but that's only for front yard entries. And so those proportions only are allowed in the front yard. Whereas in the rear yard, you know, you have to keep the required rear yard standards, and this is above that six-foot standard. And so they're asking for a setback reduction to allow that arbor there. And like I said, you guys have the ability to allow that with a condition saying no other, no additions or alterations or whatever to that arbor and no other structures within the required yard.
So that, the fence that's there now, what, what's the height of that fence? Is that four feet or that's in front of the arbor?
I'll let David speak to it, but I believe it's right around six feet, five to six feet in that, in that range.
Yes. Okay. Okay, any further questions? Any additional correspondence? I think so.
I, I do have one, I have one question.
Okay, sorry, Joe.
And, and that, and that is, what is this, the limitation on the size of arbors? Whether they're in the front yard or the side yard of.
Okay, so, so the limitation, according to the language, let me read that language for you. So, language of four, it says, "In any required front yard, fences shall not exceed three and one-half feet in height except at an entry area or arbor with a maximum height of eight feet may be permitted where its length is no more than 20% of the side frontage, up to a maximum of 10 feet." So the max is 10 feet, and its depth is no more than five feet.
Okay, so this is likely. Maybe David can speak to this, but it looks like it's taller than eight feet.
Yeah, but, but yeah, that, I'm not saying that matters is what I, I, that doesn't matter to this. That's, that's for that front yard entry language, right? Do you know what I'm saying? So what, this is falling under a setback reduction request for the required rear yard. So, yeah, you know, I'm not saying that it conforms to the front yard because it doesn't conform to the front yard.
I guess I was just going for a standard for arbers, but, okay, moving on.
Hey, the pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on, on the criteria sheet on the meeting page of the city website. Testimony, argument, evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue includes the appeal on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes, David Vinaida, Post Office, Box 648, Tollavanna Park, Oregon. And I represent Thurman and Dana Cardwell, the owners of the property. I don't know how familiar you are with the history of this project, but the Cardwells bought this house a couple of years ago. And based on kind of the development they saw along Forest Lawn, unfortunately mistakenly assumed they could build this arbor in this particular location. Now, I was not privy to the decision-making process or the design, so I can't take credit for designing it, although I, I think it is a relatively attractive structure. But nevertheless, I think both Thurman and Dana will admit if they had to do it over again, they obviously would have followed the guidelines that the city has set out for such structure. So that being said, what we're faced with here obviously is approval of a setback reduction to allow an existing structure. Now, just to back up a little bit, the thought process on the part of the Cardwells in desiring this structure were several things. Number one, as Jeff correctly pointed out, this lot has actually two street prairies. It's one on Hemlock, one on Forest Lawn. So it is a rather unique situation. None of the party here this evening, Cardwell certainly weren't party to the original design and construction, nor was I. I think if either one of us had a choice to be made, I don't think we would have even located the front yard on Hemlock. You know, that's kind of hindsight. It's obviously 2020 in hindsight, but nevertheless, it's, it set up the situation that the Cardwells were trying to remedy, and that was to try to improve the pedestrian access to Forest Lawn by building and enhancing the, the entry off Forest Lawn, not only with the six-foot fence, which it is, but also the arbor structure itself. So that was a big motivating factor for them in order to more easily connect Forest Lawn access to the existing house, kind of in an effort to redesign that access. Another thing that they were really concerned about in doing this enhanced entry and emphasize the pedestrian link to Forest Lawn is just pure safety. Their house is located on a stretch of Hemlock that is relatively limited visibility, and cars, as you probably are aware, come around the corner and pass this house at a relatively good rate of speed. So part of their desire again was just to enhance their pedestrian link to Forest Lawn and de-emphasize the use towards Hemlock. I believe Thurman, Thurman and Dana are in the audience this evening, and I think Thurman will be testifying after my presentation. But in talking to Thurman earlier today, it sounds like they have no plans, even though they might have a short-term rental license for this house, this property. I don't, I think that may be held over from the previous owner, and again, I'll let Thurman address that. But in terms of your, of any potential concern about parking along Forest Lawn, there really isn't an intent to encourage people to park on Forest Lawn and access their house through this arbor. They do have a two-car garage with two parking spaces in front of it, so they have a total of four parking spaces along Hemlock. But this pedestrian access is purely that. It's intended to be an enhanced access to Forest Lawn for the Cardwells and their immediate family and not to encourage the use of Forest Lawn for parking. So if there's any improvements that would need to be made that made that, make that more clear, I'm sure Thurman and Dana would be receptive to that. If there's a need to post more signs indicating no parking along Forest Lawn in front of their house, I'll let him address that, but that's certainly something that I would think would be receptive, agreeable to. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't think Thurman Dana also have any objection to the conditions of approval that Jeffrey has suggested as far as limiting any kind of future development or, or expansion. And that is to say, this setback reduction would be limited to the arbor itself and not be a blanket approval for enlarging it, expanding it, anything other than finishing it, frankly. And that brings up the fact that the, the completion of the arbor was interrupted, obviously, by the citation or the letter of nonconformance that was issued. They do intend to install roofing over it in a similar manner, matching the existing house. Right now, it looks like a bit of a trellis effect, but that's simply the exposed roof framing. So the intent is to complete it once we hopefully gain your approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So is this being conceived as living space?
Oh, not at all. No. If anything, it might be sheltered from the elements, you know, on the way, say you're caught in a rainstorm on the beach, you come up and you just seek refuge under the roof. But no, absolutely not. It's not considered an occupied structure by the building code.
Any other questions?
And by the way, the walls will not be enclosed any more than they are now. Again, Thurman may be able to clarify that further, but other than the gate across as part of the fence, there will be no enclosure of the walls themselves.
Okay. I have another question. Is the gate going to match the fencing that's already there?
You know, I haven't talked to Thurman about that, but as an architect, I would strongly suggest it does. Just for consistency purposes, it could be, they may elect to make it more open visually. But, you know, architecturally, I would encourage them to tie it all together in one design. And whether it's a solid gate or open frame, you know, there's some, some really beautiful fences, wood fences in Cannon Beach that I would hope they could emulate if they choose to make it open. So I'll let Thurman address that if that's good as well.
David, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
David, can you hear me okay?
Yeah. David?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
A question for you.
Yes.
Just to be clear, the, the arbor is not intended to be a staging area for someone to get in and out of their car.
That's correct. No, no. No, there's no, there's no vehicle-related activities contemplated here. It's all pedestrian. And it's just, again, to enhance the pedestrian connection to Forest Lawn and in a manner that might otherwise hopefully be considered the front yard and, you know, functionally considered the front yard. So that's, that's what really the Cardwells were trying to accomplish with this.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there presentations by proponents?
Yes, just to answer the questions that were raised.
Yeah, but state your name and mailing address.
Thurman Cardwell, 1696 South Hemlock Street, P.O. Box 1305 is the mailing address. Can you guys hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Everybody okay? Aren't they zooming here okay?
Yep.
Okay, maybe just to address, noting some of the questions down. I mean, number one, apologies for getting halfway through the project before we realized it was an issue. I think part of it was, as David and Jeff mentioned, so on our block, there's just our house and the house to the door that has the Hemlock address. I think the other, all the other 12 homes have a Forest Lawn access. And so as you walk down that block, the folks that have done that, there's large structures on that side. There's already a similar arbor. Not that that's an excuse, but that's sort of how we went forward with that and didn't think much of it. So, but apologies for that. For the last question there, so yeah, as far as the gate, yes, the intention was to put in a gate that would match the fence. I think we'd probably go possibly a little lower just to make it inviting, but, you know, in terms of design style, I think the idea is to close that and, and folks would walk through that into the, into the yard and kind of as a, an entrance to the home. To Jeff's question on the parking, I think the, the reason it looks kind of like there's parking there is there's a utility corridor. And so there's, there's a lot of space between Forest Lawn and the fence on our house and all the other houses because there's, the utilities are running through there, I think plumbing and electric. So there is a bit of space there that maybe it looks like it was designed for parking, but that is, wasn't, is not the intent we should have here. Signs that say, you know, no parking or whatever. We would love to, because that's, we don't want, you know, we, we sit back there, so we don't want a bunch of cars out on that street. Let's see, the rental question, yeah, that's just a holdover from the old owners. We did a fairly good-sized project to kind of clean up the house and redo parts of the house. It was kind of aged, and then this whole backyard landscaping and fence project was a part of that. We don't have any intention for rentals in the future. I didn't even actually know, I still have that, that license or whatever that is for the, for the renting, but that's not the intent for the home. No problem on the further construction comment. Our intent was just to finish that. It's really just for looks. It's just an entryway, you know, off that back, that backside or off Forest Lawn. And once we're finished, we're done. There's, it's not a dwelling structure. It's not for storage. It's not for anything like that. It's just strictly for, for looks as you go. Pretty there. I think that's it. That's the notes I made. Did I answer everybody's questions?
Okay. Are there other proponents? Okay, are there any opponents that would like to speak? Okay, is there a staff response?
I, I did want to mention, Daryl, that in the staff report also included all of the letters from surrounding landowners, and I think they were all positive proponents. And then on the parking issue, you know, the, I, I brought it up, but that's just another component with the transportation system plan that, you know, we're, we will be looking at all those right-of-ways and how we're gonna sign those and, and handle those in the future. So I just wanted to highlight that we'll be looking at that. But no, I have nothing else.
Do you think we need to address the parking and any kind of a, a motion here tonight or just leave that alone?
I don't think so, Clay. Like I said, that, that stretch of Forest Lawn, I brought it up to Jason and to the transportation consultant groups. We've been kind of dealing with it last year, year and a half, some issues coming up with some of those rental properties more towards the wetlands, you know, the initial area. So it's one of those areas we are going to re-sign or handle when we finalize the transportation plan.
Okay. Hey. That's the applicant. Where should you make any final statement?
Only that reiterate Jeff's comments about the supporting letters. I encouraged the Cardwells to reach out to their neighbors. I always think that's a good idea frankly, to get support from the neighbors. And in this case, they didn't encounter anybody that they talked to in their neighborhood that wasn't supportive, that didn't actually like the harbor as partially constructed. So hopefully we'll be allowed to finish it and we really appreciate your time this evening.
David, I have another question.
Okay, sure.
This one just came to me. I didn't pay attention to it when I drove by today. What is the, what's the roofing material on the house?
Thurman, can you address that? I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me.
Yeah, no problem. I think it's the shake.
It's a wood shake?
It's a wood shake. And the idea would be the the design of the harbor was intended to match the house as best we can, including like angle and flare and some of the cordials and stuff. So I don't know if you looked at the house at all, but like the harbor would have this many very similar construction.
Okay, so a lot of wood shake also.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Hey, any other comments? All right, then we will close the public hearing and move on to consideration. Well, with that in mind, having considered the evidence in the record, I moved it tentativefully approved with conditions. The David and I application will be have a, in a, Thurman, our law. Subject to no additional development or additions other than the
I second it.
Any further discussion?
I would have one thing, Darryl, is that Clay had mentioned the tentative. If you guys don't think that you need to revisit the findings, in other words, you think this is fairly simple and it's not too controversial. You can, you know, amend that tentative and just say this is a motion to approve with conditions.
I'm given that. Let's just go for approval. So I'll strike the word tentative and just move to approve. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, then let's call the roll.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
No.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
No. Okay, motion's been approved. I have a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders.
So move.
Second, second. Okay, call a roll.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke? Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes. Okay. Any comments on the tree report? Ongoing planning items?
Yes, well, I did want to mention the transportation system plan. If you haven't had an opportunity to look at the website lately, Cannon Beach T S P to look at that, there's some new reports up there. There'll be more reports added next week. We've got existing conditions, future conditions, and the parking summaries, the outreach summaries from the first survey. So all of those materials are now up on the Cannon Beach T S P page. We will also have the second round of open house and public forums that will be happening. I believe it's September fourteenth or fifteenth, but the notices will go out next week and we'll post those also on the website. And agendas and packets will be out for that as well. And then the code audit, thank you guys for getting back to everyone on dates on that. And those will be coming up next month as well. So I think next month should be a busy month starting up and and I believe we have a couple of agenda items as well for next planning commission, but I know that one has asked for deferral, so I have to, I'll touch base with Darryl on that probably tomorrow or Monday, and we'll let you guys know what's going to be on the agenda for next month. But hopefully we'll be back in town Monday, so I'll be back in the office, but I, we also got notice today that we will be going to City Hall, closing down City Hall again and back to the COVID you know, related issues that all across the country and now at Cannon Beach that we're going to be closing down and only public meetings will only be for boards and commissions. I think members can still be there in person, but I know public will be allowed in City Hall.
Okay. All right, any? Okay, anything for good of the order? Okay, in that case, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Living wall update in the packet. I don't know if you want to
Always, it's the living wall.
Say the living wall.
It's in this packet. Yeah, there, there was an update in the packet. I didn't know if anybody had any comments on it or.
And I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk about this month or back when I'm live next month, so.
Oh, for next month.
Okay, I'm happy. Yeah, I can, I can have the pictures and we can discuss it next month and Lisa will be back as well and and let her have some have a chance to speak about it.
Okay.
All right, bye bye.
Bye, everybody.
Safe travels, Jeff.
Thank you all.